Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, September 19th, 2023. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross, Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Ms. Warwick, Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kell Smith, Reverend Burgess, Pro Tem.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you very much. That gives us a quorum. If you please rise, place the flag, and we will recite in unison our pledge of allegiance. And then a moment of silence. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. And next order is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
Second.
Your second. All those in favor who signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, there's nay. A next order of business is proclamations. We have none to be presented and two to be read into the record.
Councilman Lavelle presents. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare September 17th, 2023 to be Marcia Donald Day in the City of Pittsburgh. And Councilwoman Gross presents. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Wednesday, September 27th, 2023 to be Family House Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Your second.
Second.
All those in favor who signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, there's nay. They are approved. We are now ready for our public comment. We want to remind everyone that the rules of council state comments are limited to matters of concern, official actions, or deliberations which are or may be before the City Council. Perfidy will not be permitted. When you're called to speak, please state with your name and neighborhood for our other record. You will have three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Miller.
Dr. Ronald Miller, Bill Hoover, and I also have a connection with Roma Hatalia, a Global Intelligence Society candidate for President 2024, globalintelligencessociety.org. We are pro the primacy of local government. The Global Intelligence Society and I seek individuals that are committed to optimizing information and intelligence competency in government. And we want, we intend for global intelligence, a fusion of the info intel frameworks of the 21 primary disciplines to do that. I mean, a concern of this council is competency in the actions of elected and unelected government workers. I and the GIS have evolved a vector analytic for evaluating competency in government workers. And here is an episode. The pre-agenda Human Relations Commission interview that was conducted for the candidate conducted on 13th September 2023, Councilor Strasburger presiding. Vector one, there were two out of nine counselors who were there for most of the interview. Strasburger, Kraus, and Warwick came in at the very end and didn't say anything. So the competency points are three out of 10. Vector two, Strasburger offered no resume for the candidate. But the candidate did offer a few summary points, so that's five out of 10. Vector three, Strasburger offered no information regarding the candidate competition for pay or the procedure for approval, so that's zero out of 10. Vector four, Kraus gave an overview, a very general overview of the history of the commission. Five out of 10. Vector vectors five, six, and seven have to do with who specifically created, who changed the HRC foundation and connections outside of the Office of Mayor. And what is it that the HRC is actually supposed to do? So that's zero, zero, zero. And vector eight, neither Strasburger nor Kraus said how a citizen could access the commission. And vector nine, when Kraus was talking with the candidate, Strasburger started scrolling through her digital device. I just think that's uncivil.
Thank you very much. And next registered speaker is Andre Davis. Are you with us? Are you online, Mr. Davis? Not seeing you. Our next registered speaker is Andre Del Valle. Andre Del Valle.
Yes, good morning, councilmember.
Good morning.
Well, good morning, council. Good morning, and City Council members, and thank you for the opportunity to testify today on the following legislation, which was originally 2022-0270, which was an amendment by substitution, which would create a permanent inspection process for rental properties in Pittsburgh. My name is Andre Del Valley. I'm the Vice President of Government Affairs for the Pennsylvania Apartment Association. We are a statewide organization representing apartment owners, managing companies, and their industry suppliers, representing over 37,000 units and 21 property management companies here in Pittsburgh. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to testify today, and thank Councilmember Wilson and all the bill sponsors for their commitment to keeping residents, the residents of Pittsburgh, safe following the horrific shooting at a short, in a short-term rental property last year, which was the original impetus for this legislation. While we understand that this legislative body legislates for the bad actors, as written, we do share concerns which we've shared with the bill sponsor and hope to be part of the stakeholder engagement throughout the regulatory process to share our industry perspective. While this bill originally hoped to address the issue of short-term rentals and the nuisance behavior, along with the shooting that occurred last year, which has been heavily reported, the current version of the bill does not differentiate a short-term rental versus a traditionally monthly, six-month lease or annual lease, which impacts the multifamily industry here in Pittsburgh. While some of the requirements of legislation are primarily geared towards the traditional mom-and-pop housing suppliers, other aspects of legislation create challenges for multifamily housing industry, which should have two different, two different processes for an ordinance of this magnitude. For example, this legislation requires a name, residence, telephone number, email for all property owners of the rental units, which in our industry would be companies who have property managers within the building, who would, who should be the points of contact in the event of emergency situations. While this may seem like a basic amendment, other sections of the ordinance state that no person shall provide inaccurate information for the registration of rental unit, and failure to comply with this provision will result in the rejection of an application, which will lead to a number of applications being denied due to property managers being listed in lieu of the owners. This legislation requires a post issuance inspection for which for a traditional mom-and-pop housing supplier can mean that their property could be inspected within a few hours. For the multifamily housing building, which could have 50, 100, or even more than 100 units within the building, could take weeks to get an inspector to get through each unit within the building due to the technical components of a larger building. This will lead to several delays in the permit process for industry and once again hurting the good-acting housing suppliers, who most already have maintenance teams on-site to ensure the safety of residents and compliance. This ordinance would also be implemented as soon as regulations are finished, which doesn't give housing suppliers ample time to properly educate, to be educated on the new regulations, along with the costs associated with this ordinance. We respectfully request at least a six-month delay on implementation, so education campaigns, webinars, and proper outreach.
Thank you very much. That brings us to Chief Poma Chalkmom Yahalahi. Chief, are you here?
In fact, yes, I'm here. Thank you so much. Can I be heard?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, thank you. I'm gonna check down like a eee, the light of me honors the light and everyone here today. My title is Easta Ma Chalkmom Yahalahi, and I'm the Grand Council Chief of Medicine for the Iroquois Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. And I want to read for the record today, the Constitution for the United States of America, Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3, and Excluding Indians Not Tax. And it's very clear in Bubie's dictionary adapted to the Constitution that the term Indians refers to the aborigines of this country, or so-called, and that in Indian tribe, in the sense of the Constitution, Indians not taxed, is a separate and distinct community, or a body of the Aboriginal Indian races of men found in the United States. And you can't find the people when you are already here. And all Indian treaties entered into prior to 1871 were consummated pursuant to Article 2, Section 2 of the United States Constitution. And Article 6, commonly referred to as the Supremacy Clause, which provides that this Constitution and the laws of the United States, which shall be made in pursuance thereof, and all treaties made, or which shall be made, under the authority of the United States, shall be the supreme law of the land, and the judges in every state shall rebound thereby anything in the Constitution or laws of any state to the contrary notwithstanding. The Supreme Court has consistently held that Indian treaties have the same force and effect as treaties with foreign nations, and consequently are the supreme law of the land and are binding upon state courts and state legislatures, notwithstanding state laws to the contrary. The Supreme Court, speaking to Chief Justice Marshall, stated in part as follows. "The statute was held void since it conflicted with the Cherokee Indian Treaty, which was declared to be supreme law of the land. The Indian nations has always been considered as distinct, independent political communities, retaining their original natural rights as the undisputed possessors of the soil from time immemorial." And the Northwest Ordinance of 1877, Article 3, "The utmost good faith shall always be observed toward the Indians. Their lands and property shall never be taken from them without their consent, and in their property rights and liberty, they shall never be invaded or disturbed unless unjust and lawful wars authorized by Congress. But laws bound in justice and humanity shall from time to time be made for preventing wrongs being done to them and for the preserving peace and friendship with them." And House Commerce Resolution 331, "To acknowledge the contributions of the development of the United States Constitution by the Iroquois Confederacy of Nations, and to reaffirm our government-to-government relationship between our people and the United States established in the Constitution, and for a caveat, Indians not taxed."
Thank you very much. That exhausts our registered speaker, so if there's anyone in the chambers who wishes to speak, please come. You also will be given three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Javon F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street. That's K. Lee Irving's Tires. Last week, as Dr. Miller was speaking, I had to go to the ladies' room. Well, when people speak, you hear me clap. And the reason why I'm clapping, I'm letting them know I'm paying attention to you. I may not agree with everything you're saying. Unlike you, City Council, you're usually on your gadgets or talking to Ms. Gross. It seemed like she's the one that you all rally around. But if you missed Dr. Miller's speech, a three-minute speech, please pull it up. You have the computer, you'll be able to. I want you to listen to what he says. A lot of times, they don't listen. But we, the citizens, hear him, and I thank him for coming. When he's not here, I do miss him. Now, also, there's something up in K. Lee Irving's. It's very funky up there. It's stinking. We have the tenant council who's making the decisions, that they're bringing politicians up to the building, but everybody don't know. Okay, so they was taking a picture of DeWitt Walton. Okay, I'm there with the broom sweeping. They passed me twice. And then I found out who they were talking to. Now, I want you to understand why I'm saying anything. I went to county council and asked DeWitt Walton about the bus. We don't have any transportation to the bottom of the hill to the hospital. And they asked him would he call the bus company. And he said, "No, I know what they need." Now, how does he know? When I tried to explain to him, "You have a car. We're riding a bus. You live in the home. We're renting from these people." I want you to understand that when I confronted, this is a member of this group, when I confronted her, I went to her and I said, "How come you passed me twice, you didn't ask to take my picture? But how come the whole building don't know that he's coming?" And I wish that the election bureau would come up and explain what they're allowed to do. How is it that she can have him, this politician, and take him pictures? Took Mr. Lavelle's picture down. I mean, not Lavelle, not you, sir. Took Mr., um, sorry, took his picture down, took a picture with it. It's one to the frame, the picture didn't break, because he is the one that said he'll make the decision on what we need. If I come down and tell him what we need, he told me, "No, no, my best friend, she live in..." When he said her name, I said, "But sir," and he screamed at me. He knew that if he didn't do it, she was gonna make sure it wasn't that. She's dead and gone, and we still can't get anyone to try to help us to get a bus or a shuttle down the bottom of the hill. You know, I'm a little disgusted with gems. I must say that. Have a nice day.
Thank you very much. Any other speaker?
Rick Nor, I'm from Brookline. It's a little off-subject for me, but I wanted to thank the mayor for the Pittsburgh potties down here at Gateway Center. Excellent idea. I think it'll be a great success. That's something that I think will work out real well, and I know the mayor's taken a lot of heat over it, but it's right on the mark as far as I'm concerned. Now, I want to talk about the rapid transit system again, that I believe is needed between the airport and downtown. I want to first start with a couple of statistics. First of all, it's 10 miles from the Golden Triangle to the airport. Currently, we get about 100,000 vehicles a day on the Fort Pitt Bridge. I wanted to put this in its proper context when we compare this to the Southern Beltway project that goes from Washington County, the top of Washington County, to the airport, which was another major transportation project to the airport. Now, these people are real happy about that because it knocks about 15 minutes travel time and it voids the Parkway West. That's the two stated goals, and it does accomplish that. The problem is, is that the project cost $900 million. It's a 13-mile-long highway, and apparently only 9,000 people on average use that road a week. Now, when you put that into context of the Fort Pitt Bridge, which most of the traffic goes out the Parkway West, it's 77 times the traffic that you get on the Fort Pitt Bridge. So those who criticize me or question my logic behind this, I can only say that it is desperately needed. It's only gonna get worse, and it'll be well worth the money if you invest in it. Please think about it. Do a little research and discuss it with your friends. Thank you for your time and have a great day.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no other speakers. We will now move to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished, any unfinished business before coming? But is there something else next? What did I do there? Communication next?
Presentation.
I'm sorry. Yes, I couldn't get my, my sheet turned fast enough. I'm old. If I make, if I make a mistake, blame Councilman Kraus. The next we have presentation of papers. That's a joke. First, our Councilman Burgess, Ms. Gross, for myself, Chair of Human Resources. We do have one.
Councilman Burgess presents Bill Number 1932, Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor, excuse me, of Global Wordsmiths in an Amount Not to Exceed $23,976.66 for Professional Services Related to Translation of Outreach Materials and Vital Documents for the Year 2023.
Thank you very much. Ms. Gross, for Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
No new papers, Mr. Pro Tem.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
No new papers, Mr. Pro Tem.
Thank you. And Mr. Lavelle, or actually you for also, Councilman Gross, this is your day, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
No new papers, Mr. Pro Tem.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I am here.
Oh, you're here. Mr. Kraus.
Thank you. No new papers, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Councilman Lavelle.
Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1933, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Dicky McCamey &amp; Chilcoe PC for Expert Legal Services in Connection with a Litigation Matter in the U.S. District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania for an Amount Not to Exceed $2,445.75 over one year. Bill 1934, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Summers, McDonald, Hudok, Guthrie, and Rouch PC for Expert Legal Services in Connection with a Litigation Matter in the U.S. District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania for an Amount Not to Exceed $19,289.89 over one year. Bill 1935, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Christopher P. Boyle for Expert Fees in Connection with a Litigation Matter in the U.S. District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania for an Amount Not to Exceed $7,500 over one year. Bill 1936, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in an Amount Not to Exceed $8,691.12 over one year in favor of Helen A. Wilson in full and final settlement of a claim for damage to her residence from a failed city-owned tree. Bill 1937, Resolution Amending 164 of 2023, which authorized the mayor and the city solicitor on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a professional services agreement with Loeb &amp; Loeb LLP for legal services related to real estate matters by increasing the total spend by $250,000 for a new not to exceed amount of $400,000 over one year. And Bill Number 1938, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in an Amount Not to Exceed $5,000 over one year in favor of King George in full and final settlement of a claim for damage to property from a city environmental services vehicle.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Councilman Strasburger, Chair of Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services.
Thank you, Mr. Pro Tem.
Thank you.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 1939, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with the Pittsburgh Board of Public Education or another vendor chosen through the city's bid process for the purpose of providing meals in connection with the 2023 through 2024 food service program in the Department of Parks and Recreation. The total cost shall not exceed $750,000. And Bill Number 1940, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with the Outdoor Inclusion Network for the Purpose of Establishing a Gear-Lending Library for Use in Riverview Park and the Co-creation of Training that Prepares Youth-Serving Organizations for Outdoor Camping Experiences. This service is provided at no cost to the city.
I need a motion for Bill 1940.
Motion to weigh the rules of council so it appears on tomorrow's agenda.
Your second. All those in favor who signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, there's nay. Clerk is ordered to put it on the agenda tomorrow. That takes us to Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
No new papers.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1941, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance to Execute a Quick Claim, Deed or Deeds, and Any Other Necessary or Appropriate Documents, Agreements, and Instruments conveying as is all of the city's right, title, and interests, if any, in a specified portion of the vacated Union Avenue comprising the access drive for the Allegheny Commons Apartments and ancillary open space to Allegheny Commons Community Partnership LP for consideration of $1.
Thank you very much. Now, it takes us to Councilwoman Kell Smith, Chair of Hearing and Policy. She has read.
Council President Kell Smith presents Bill Number 1942, Resolution Appointing Samuel McCloud as a Member of the Commission on Infrastructure, Asset Reporting, and Investment with a Term to Expire September 15th, 2027. Bill Number 1943, Resolution Appointing Jamil Bay as a Member of the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority Board of Directors with a Term to Expire July 7th, 2028.
What is your intention, council? We can either hold for interview or motion to approve. I have no interest in interviewing, but you may.
Motion to approve.
Your second.
Second.
All those in favor who signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, there's nay. They are approved. And, and, and next, we have a resolution?
Bill Number 1946, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 723 of 2022, Effective December 27th, 2022, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2023 Capital Budget, the 2023 Community Development Program, and the 2023 through 2028 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Park Reconstruction (PARKS) Tax, Deliverable Trail Asset Management Plan (PARKS) Tax by $150,000, and Increasing Park Reconstruction (PARKS) Tax, Deliverable West End Park Drive (PARKS) Tax by $150,000."
I need a motion to re-receive and file?
So moved.
Your second. I'm gonna do them separately. All those in favor who signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, there's nay. Did I say that right? Oh, that was not it. That was not the communication. That was, okay. I'm sorry. Huh? All right, so it's not that. I'll get to the, I'll get to that part. So that's just regular, is there any? Is there another piece of legislation or just that's the only one?
That's it, and then it's your communication.
Okay, so now, now, we're at the, we're at the communication part. I'll take them separately. I have one resolution, one communication. So I need to withdraw my motion to receive, re-receive, and file. Is there such a motion?
Motion to withdraw Bill 2023-1946.
Your second.
Second.
All those in favor who signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so go in our regular process, right?
Correct.
We in board, clerk? Okay, so next is the resolution. Is that next?
It's your communication.
My communication. Gotcha. All right, so there are moments of time when we do historic things, and I think this is one of those moments, so I'm going to ask that the clerk reads this in its entirety.
Bill Number 2023-1948, Communication from the Honorable Reverend Ricky V. Burgess, Member, Pittsburgh City Council, to the Honorable LaShawn Burton Falk, Cheerwoman, City of Pittsburgh Planning Commission, the Honorable Karen Abrams, Director, Department of City Planning, City of Pittsburgh, and Corey Lehman, Zoning Administrator, Division of Development and Design Review, Department of City Planning, City of Pittsburgh, informing them of the execution of a Community Benefits Agreement between the Larmor Consensus Group and Village Collaborative, Registered Community Organizations in Walnut Capital Acquisitions, Inc., regarding the expansion of the specially-planned district in the East Liberty and Larmor neighborhoods, and requests the following to be read, received, and filed, and transmitted to be above-named parties. Whereas, the Larmor Consensus Group and Village Collaborative, both duly-recognized registered community organizations, have spent the past two years in discussions with the representatives from Walnut Capital regarding the possible expansion of the Bakery Square specially-planned district in East Liberty and Larmor. And whereas, residents and representatives from these two neighborhoods have been fighting for decades for equitable redevelopment and revitalization of their communities. And whereas, there are these residents and community stakeholders made clear to the city during the work to secure the HUD Choice Neighborhoods Grant over a decade ago, that they believed that their neighborhoods needed a healthy mix of affordable rental housing for residents with incomes at or below 50% of the area median income, and affordable for-sale housing for families with incomes above that threshold, who are by no means wealthy or affluent. And whereas, Larmor, which due to the success of the Choice Neighborhoods Grant and partnerships with the City of Pittsburgh, Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh, Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh, and the strong support of local Authority of Pittsburgh, and the strong support of local, state, and federal elected officials, has seen the construction of hundreds of new federally subsidized affordable rental units, which has helped to stabilize the housing of the families who reside in those units, but has a home ownership rate 15% lower than a home ownership rate of the region. And whereas, there are approximately 700 distressed parcels in Larmor, many of which are vacant lots or abandoned homes in need of repair or demolition. And whereas, Walnut Capital has pledged in this agreement to help raise $25 million to fund the effort to increase affordable and mixed-income home ownership for black families near the Bakery Square site through rehabilitation and new construction of 100 homes in East Liberty and Larmor, and fund the technical assistance needed to make this commitment a reality. Whereas, the attached agreement is an example of transformational development. Transformational development is a process whereby residents are empowered to create safe and healthy communities with sufficient amenities and services and receive access to wealth, entrepreneurship, and employment.
Motion to read, receive, and file, please.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Alright, thank you very much. Now we'll move to unfinished business. We have a bill appointing a... Ma'am clerk.
Bill 1543. Resolution appointing Namita Dwarkanath as a member of the Commission on Human Relations for terms set to expire December 31, 2027.
Need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, please.
Need a second?
Second.
Any conversation? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Alright, that exclude... Is there any more unfinished business? Seeing none, the next order of business is reports for Committee for Final Action, starting as always with Councilman R. Daniel Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law. Thanks.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1927. Reported a Committee on Finance and Law for September 13, 2023, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1752. Ordinance amending the City of Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances, City of Pittsburgh Service Workers Prevailing Wage Ordinance, Title I, Administrative, Article VII, Procedures, Chapter 161, Contracts by Supplementing Section 161.38. Bill 1833. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Brennan Thrower in an amount not to exceed $18,000 in full and final settlement of a discharge grievance. Bill 1884. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement or agreements with Hawk, McKean, and Snisak LLP in an amount not to exceed $60,000 for a period of one year for professional legal services related to the Public Utility Commission. Bill Number 1885. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in an amount not to exceed $5,857.1 over one year in favor of Ronald J. Jordan in full and final settlement of a claim for damage to his motorized wheelchair due to a malfunctioning handicap door in the City County Building. Bill 1886. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in an amount not to exceed $3,992.26 over one year in favor of Ralph Howman and Jean Zeeler in full and final settlement of a claim for damage to their stop vehicle from a city's EMS vehicle backing into it. Bill 1887. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in an amount not to exceed $3,156.41 over one year in favor of Robert Ireland in full and final settlement of a claim for damage to his parked vehicle from a city environmental services vehicle. Bill 1888. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in an amount not to exceed $13,148 over one year in favor of Lorraine E. Maisick in full and final settlement of a claim for destruction of a residential sewer lateral due to encroachment of tree roots from a city-owned right-of-way tree. Bill 1889. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in an amount not to exceed $7,500 over one year in favor of Sharon Copey, executor of the estate of Stephen Copey, in full and final settlement of a litigation filed in the US District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania. Bill 1890. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of a single payment in 2023 to Linda Lasik and Thomas J. Lasik and their attorney, G. Christopher Apessis, in an amount not to exceed $55,000 in settlement of a case filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill 1891. Resolution further amending Resolution Number 886 of 2021, effective December 27, 2021, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2022 Capital Budget and the 2022 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2022 through 2027 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Bridge Preservation and Restoration Fund by $49,052, increasing Swinburne Bridge by $157,548, increasing Larmor Bridge by $800,000, increasing Maple Avenue Bridge by $170,000, and increasing Corley Street Bridge by $538,000. Bill 1892. Resolution further amending Resolution Number 797 of 2017, effective December 28, 2017, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2018 Capital Budget and the 2018 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2018 through 2023 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing McFerrin Street/Second Avenue Bridge by $9,719.73, increasing bridge repairs by $9,361.10, and increasing Liberty Avenue by $90,358.63."
You've heard the reading title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. But clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye!
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Reverend Burgess Protam?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nos.
Thank you very much. The bills have been received. The legally required number of votes is passed finally. That takes us to Councilman Kraus, Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 1928. Reported a Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure for September 13, 2023, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1873. Resolution providing for the issuance of a warrant in favor of Adler &amp; Sons, Inc., in the amount of $8,900 for tree removal work at Dodd's in Potomac Avenue. Bill 1874. Resolution providing for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary design phase of the Maple Avenue Bridge project, providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $450,000, an increase of $170,000 from the previously executed agreement. This resolution serves to authorize only the amended reimbursement agreement or agreements at no cost to the City of Pittsburgh. Future resolutions will authorize the project-specific service agreements. Bill 1875. Resolution providing for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary design phase of the Corley Street Bridge project, providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $790,000, an increase of $538,000 from the previously executed agreement. This resolution serves to authorize only the amended reimbursement agreement or agreements at no cost to the City of Pittsburgh. Future resolutions will authorize the project-specific service agreements. Bill 1876. Resolution providing for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary design, final design, utility, right-of-way, and construction phases of the Swinburne Street Bridge project, and providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $14,909,000, an increase of $12,559,000 from the previously executed agreement, reimbursable at 95% and a municipal share of Commonwealth incurred costs not to exceed $16,250, a $12,250 increase from the previously executed agreement. Bill 1877. Resolution providing for a contribution agreement or agreements between the City of Pittsburgh and the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the SR 4003 East Street and Evergreen Road Project, providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $31,500. Bill 1878. Resolution providing for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary design phase of the Larmor Avenue Bridge project, providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $1,600,000, an increase of $800,000. This resolution serves to authorize only the reimbursement agreement or agreements at no additional cost to the City of Pittsburgh from the previously authorized $1,500. Future resolutions will authorize the project-specific service agreements. Bill 1879. Resolution providing for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with multiple phases of the Liberty Avenue Highway Safety Improvement Program, providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $7,505,556, an increase of $100,000 for the right-of-way phase from the previously executed agreement. This resolution serves to authorize only the reimbursement agreement at a cost to the City of Pittsburgh of $5,500, an increase of $1,000 from the previously executed agreement. Future resolutions will authorize the project-specific service agreements. Bill 1880. Resolution providing for supplemental agreement or agreements with the total construction for construction services associated with the Allegheny Circle Phase II Construction Project, providing for payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $2,890,945.46, an increase of $252,945.46 from the previously executed agreement as previously authorized by Resolution Number 670 of 2020. Bill 1881. Resolution providing for a contribution agreement or agreements between the City of Pittsburgh and the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the SR 60 Thornburg Bridge Project, providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $24,700. Bill 1882. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of Public Works on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements or the use of existing agreements for the professional construction management services for home with park infrastructure upgrades between the City of Pittsburgh and Cosmos Technologies. The total not-to-exceed cost is $288,133.28. And Bill Number 1883. Resolution amending Resolution Number 386, effective June 19, 2019, as amended by Resolution Number 70, effective February 18, 2020, entitled, "Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreement or the Use of Existing Agreements Between the City of Pittsburgh and Pacheco Plus MTR for the Professional Landscape Architectural Services for Southside Park Phase I Design at a Cost Not to Exceed $400,000, by increasing the total allocation by the amount of $61,220 for a new total of $461,220."
You've heard the title and reading of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. But clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye!
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Reverend Burgess Protam?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nos.
The bill having received, the legally required number of votes is finally passed. That takes us to Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1929. Reported a Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for September 13, 2023, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1893. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of City Planning to enter into a professional services agreement and/or contracts with HRNA advisors for the purpose of assisting in the development of a strategic plan for the Department of City Planning, cost not to exceed $109,000 over one year. Bill 1894. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of City Planning to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission for the purpose of receiving and spending grant funds in an amount of $20,000, with a local match of $50,000 for a total project cost not to exceed $70,000, to support planning efforts to create historic guidelines for three previously designated historic districts, Roslin Place, Shinley Farms, and the Mexican War Streets Expansion. And Bill Number 1895. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of City Planning of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a professional services agreement with Michael Baker International in an amount not to exceed $25,000 to complete an architectural survey of the Crawford Roberts Neighborhood.
You've heard the reading title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. But clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye!
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Reverend Burgess Protam?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nos.
The bill having received, the legally required number of votes is finally passed. That takes us to Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, Committee on Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services.
Protam?
Thank you.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 1930. Reported a Committee on Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services for September 13, 2023, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1899. Ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances, Title IV, Public Places and Property, Article 11, Parks and Playgrounds, by adding a new chapter, 481, Use Regulations, Providing Guidance for Development in Parks and Greenways.
You've heard the reading title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. But clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Apologies muted. Aye!
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Reverend Burgess Protam?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nos.
The bill having received, the legally required number of votes is finally passed. That takes us to Councilwoman Deborah L. Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Ms. Protam?
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1931. Reported a Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs for September 13, 2023, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1872. Resolution providing for the issuance of a warrant in favor of the Allegheny League of Municipalities in the amount of $9,000 for annual dues for direct membership.
You've heard the reading title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. But clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye!
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Reverend Burgess Protam?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nos.
Alright, the bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. That takes us to Councilwoman Gross. I believe you have a small game of chance.
I don't have it in front of me. Does the clerk have it? Okay, yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Protam? Councilwoman Gross presents, now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh hereby recognize the Stanton Heights Neighborhood Association to be a civic and/or service organization within the context of the Pennsylvania Small Games of Chance Act as amended.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Need a second?
Second.
All those in favor? So, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Alright, that gives us some announcements. This afternoon at 1:30, council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill 2021 1841 as it relates to the inter-municipal transfer of liquor license as applicable to Amboy Restaurants of Pittsburgh. Where's that? What district is that? Am I presiding over that, or is there someone whose district it's in?
It's my district.
You want to preside over it?
Sure.
Alright, good. Alright, council's standing committee meeting is scheduled for 10 a.m. tomorrow, Wednesday, September 20. To register to speak, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage, or call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Speaker registration will close at 9 a.m. tomorrow. Speaker registration will close at 9:00 AM tomorrow morning. And also, tomorrow, September 20th, council will hold a briefing on the August 23rd Garfield Standoff Shooting and the August 25th Smithfield Street Incident. The first session begins at 1:00 PM and the second session at 2:00 PM. Anything for members? Mr. Lavelle.
Yeah, you didn't say anything about your commi... Why is it so loud? Sorry. You didn't say anything about your communication to the planning department, zoning department. But I just wanted to simply congratulate you. I know in the reading of the bill, you mentioned $25 million being raised. But just based on what I know I've tried to get done in the district, if there's a commitment to reconstruct or construct 100 new homes... Now you can't hear me. Sorry. If there's a commitment to construct 100 new homes in the Homewood-Lambor area, at a minimum, you're talking $20 million. If you're constructing new, you're upwards of $40 million. So that's actually a really big deal, and I just wanted to congratulate you.
Thank you. I, um... It is, in some ways, the... I'm the last piece of my work in this area, right? We've done lots of affordable housing and done lots of rental stuff, but this now moves to wealth building and intergenerational wealth building. And that is, I hope, something I intend to pursue now, and when my time as council is over. It is my goal to continue to advocate and to the extent other communities and other cities, what my participation to teach the principles of transformational development. Because I think that is where we need to go as a city. And it can only be done with a partnership by residents and community-based organizations, the government, and then business and/or corporate organizations. They must form a partnership. This cannot be done by one entity by itself, and residents have to be in charge of it. And so I hope to lead that thinking. Even after my time with you is gone, my time for the city is not gone. Anything else from members? I thank you very much for that, Mr. Lavelle. There is a fact, there's going to be a press conference at 1:00 outside Chambers about this with the community groups, and all of you are invited to be a participant if you so choose. Anything else from members? I do have to explain this, since I said it publicly, I have to explain the inside joke publicly. Mr. Kraus was the president longest since I've been on council. So whatever I do presiding, I got from him. And that's when I say blame it on him, it's because he is my role model in this work. Alright, and so I need a motion to excuse the opposite members, approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We are adjourned! Ms. Gross.